All right, the meeting will come to order. Welcome, everyone. This is a regular business meeting of the Riverside School District 96 Board of Education. It's a special meeting because we have Student Appreciation Night, which is a very special event. But before we get to that, we just have a few bookkeeping items to go through here. So first, Margie, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Barsadi?
Present.
Mr. Hunt?
Here.
Ms. Kleiber?
Here.
Mr. Marhol?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
Mr. Regan?
Present.
Thanks, Margie. At this time, is there any public comment? If there's no public comment, then we... Does any board member have any proposed changes to the agenda? If not, then we move right on to the superintendent's report and the student achievement recognition.
Great. So it is exciting to see everybody here. We decided last year... I know the board always wants to acknowledge the important and exciting work that's going on in our district in different ways. And we decided that each trimester, we would look at students in District 96 that have earned awards and different achievements. So tonight, we have a whole lot of children here with their parents. So thanks for being here. And to start it off, I'm going to actually introduce Pam Shaw, our Special Education Director, and Pete Gatz, the principal at Central School, to kick off our student awards and recognition night. And we thought as we introduce... I know this one's going to take just a little bit longer, right? Because there's a presentation that goes along with this. But then we would ask the board to maybe come stand in front of the seats and acknowledge the students. Yeah. So we'll let you do this part first, and then we'll come out. Does that make sense? Okay.
The first award tonight is going to be presented by Sandy Champus from Ladsy Cooperative. And Sandy is one of the Assist of Technology specialists, and she has an award to present.
I'm here to present our very first Empowered by Assist of Technology Award to Luke Perry. I have had the distinct pleasure of working with Luke's educational team since he began in District 96 in early childhood, and he is now a fifth grader at Central School. His team is very proud of his progress using technology, and we have a very short video to show his progress.
On behalf of the Ladsy System Tech team, we would like to congratulate Luke Perry and his team on receiving the very first Empowered by Assist of Technology Award. Luke, a fifth grader at Central School, is receiving this award because of his outstanding growth in using his iPad as a communication device and to assist him with written assignments. Luke began in early childhood at Hollywood School, pretty quickly graduated from nine squares to a 15-square dynamic display device. While at Central, Luke moved to a 42-square vocabulary file on an iPad, and just recently to 60 squares. All right, Luke, are you ready to share? On the weekend, Anthony Sofia and I carved pumpkins. Anthony and Sofia carved scary pumpkins. I carved down a pumpkin with a palm print on it. After we carved the pumpkins, we watched a scary movie. Does anyone have any questions or comments? George. Throughout his years in District 96, Luke's team has collaborated with Ladsy System Tech to assist him in participating fully in all aspects of his education. Congratulations, Luke, on using assistive technology to communicate, write, and to be an important part of Central School. We are honored to present you with this award.
We'll say there are some staff members that are here that worked with Luke since the time he was in early childhood. And this is Cameron's back there, who's been with him for many years. It's a tribute to Luke's hard work, perseverance, but to his parents as well for being persistent and being advocates for him and his behalf, and to my team who have worked so hard with him over the last five years. Congratulations to you all. This is truly the definition of a team working together to support a student. Congratulations, Luke.
We're going to move on to the Special Olympics awards that we have. We have two members of our district who did so well in the regionals that they went to state and were honored in state for their accomplishments. And Special Olympics second-place participation award went to Luke Perry. And we have a Special Olympic state fifth place in the 100-meter race, and that award went to Eli Fox, who placed in that. I don't believe he scored. Congratulations. Thank you.
My name's April May, and I'm the principal here at Hauser, and very excited to have lots of great faces here tonight. We wanted to honor all of the students who had special awards throughout the first trimester. Not all of the students are here, but we're going to say everybody's name because everyone earned these honors. If you are here, if you wouldn't mind coming up, and I'll give you your certificate, and if you would please go by and get some handshakes from our board. And I know Hauser students, while they're thanking you, I know you also were a part of everybody made thank you cards for the board, so you can give them your gratitude as well. So it can be a two-way street there, okay? First, we are going to honor the choir members, the ILMEA District One Festival. So this was an audition, and these children made it on. Anya Hopack. And Caroline Bidworth. And Violetta Marovic. All right, the next ones, and actually, our orchestra teacher, Mrs. Gill, has come tonight as well in her final year of teaching here at Hauser. And she wanted to be here to congratulate the kids as well. So we have there Noah Breonas. William Carl. Ethan Dimano. Roshan Maloney. Anthony Perry. Congratulations. Those are orchestra students from the ILMEA. And then we also had students from the ILMEA Band who also made it on. We have Carl Lucas. We have Ronnie Makia. We have Nicholas Saharsky. And then to some of our athletes here at Hauser, very lucky that our eighth-grade girls' volleyball team won the conference. So we have Ann Barlow. Gillian Dowling. Shannon Molloy. Reagan Peschke. And one more group of athletes. Our eighth-grade soccer team also won the SCVC Conference Championship. So we have some soccer players here tonight. We have Ethan Ramf. Omar Lopez. Luigi Molo. Alex Garcia. Oh, wait. You're trying to be a joke. Congratulations. Grayson Pocoric. Remi Hilt. Matt Novak. Mateo Cubus. Amanda De Forte. Israel Gonzalez. William Carl. Eddie Melidis. Miguel Garcia. And Evan Braniff. And I think that's the end of the student presentations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're all leaving us.
They always should.
Two years.
It's similar as a year old.
Ah. Daughter is still coming back from the basketball game, or how they didn't make it.
That's nice.
Oh, Mary, don't forget that. What would you do without your phone?
And then there was Al.
I'll continue on the superintendent's report, I guess, right? I should have had everyone stay just a little bit longer, but because the next item is school board appreciation. I don't know if you didn't know, today is the Illinois School Board Members' Day. So behind you, and I know board members had a chance to look as to arriving, but we have thank yous from all five of our schools represented and different creative ideas, ways of thanking all of you for what you do. And we also have Stephen Jones here. Stephen's over there. Is he hiding? So Stephen also has something, and some other students that wanted to say a thank you to our school board.
Oh. I like this.
So we're in... Okay. So we're in... Okay, so we're in C Entrepreneur, and we used... We sort of thank you for the facilities, for allowing us to create this. We learned a lot in this class. So for our clients, for the project we had, we had a client, so that was Miss Schuler, and we created signs for all the school board members with stands.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Yeah. Okay. What's the name of the machine that they use?
Oh, just the carving.
The carving.
Yeah. Do you remember when we were talking about the purpose of this? I like to do it.
You're right. You're right.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, the stands are cool. I hope they had to come up with those. Did they design? They did. Cute. Nice job, girls. Very good job. Oh, that's neat. It's D96. Yeah. So they changed. Yeah. Just for you guys.
So the stands took like...
About an hour.
An hour, yeah. And then the actual signs, Nancy, for almost 20 minutes?
Can you go tell them a little bit about how you made it?
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Okay. So we used an easel program, a program called easel, and you just... You can import a design. So we had multiple designs that she could choose from, but we decided on the 96 because that was the cleanest one to see. So we chose from the fonts that the program has, and then they want their name and the school board number really clear. And then we... On the carving, there's a computer connected to it, so then we just import that, and then it prints out. And we had it... Because the lines, we had it, like, print deeper so it could cut through them to make the signs. And the Tinkercad, you made that in Tinkercad?
Yeah, it was the stand. They took about an hour, and you just put, like, grew a bunch of shapes together, and then it prints out on the 3D printer.
Well, these are great. Thanks very much. These are really nice. Really nice. Very impressed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It just really represents a program that you all supported, bringing STEAM classes to Hauser. So... And Margie was the client and worked with them, so thank you for that.
Thanks, Margie.
But in all sincerity, thank you for all you do. I think I said it a year ago, maybe. I say it other times. I hope I do, that this is a job that sometimes goes without a lot of thank you. So please appreciate the thank you from the students and the faculty and from all of us. So thank you, thank you. Because this is a feel-good night, I'm just going to keep going. There's one other... It's a mini grant that one of our teachers at Hauser received. It's called a Roots and Shoots Mini Grant, and it was for the sum of $200, which I know may not sound like a whole lot of money, but I think it really represents just some really interesting and exciting work that's going on through our co-curriculars. Roots and Shoots is actually a program sponsored essentially by Jane Goodall that really promotes service and compassion and leadership in schools and making a difference for people, animals, and the environment, all things that I think appeal very much to our middle schoolers. So they wrote a grant, and you have some of the student essays in the board packet attached, but they wrote a grant with the idea being that they wanted to do something to beautify the local area, their school specifically, and they want to plant a garden. They actually have an idea, a place picked out in the front of Hauser, and with this $200, they will begin to think about buying supplies, and they're going to reach out for even some additional funds, I think, to some local landscapers, et cetera. But anyway, I thought the essays were really well done and wanted to share all of that with all of you. And then just, this is another one of the examples of the co-curriculars that I want you to be aware of. I wasn't even as aware until I heard they had funded some money.
That's great. Yeah.
Yeah. And then just one other item on the superintendent's report was the Five Essentials survey that was scheduled to open tomorrow. And actually, we just received word from the state that there's been a delay just in some rostering and some, I think, kind of some backbone-related issues. So we assume that it will be released, hopefully, maybe still before the Thanksgiving break. We had a plan all worked out that we were really going to encourage parent participation at parent-teacher conferences tomorrow night. I may get word tomorrow that it's ready to be launched. It was supposed to launch today, but it will launch in the near future. It's just the date has not yet been determined and set by the State Board of Ed. But we did this two years ago. It's actually a mandatory survey every two years. Last year, we took the non-mandatory year off as a year to kind of think about, are there other climate and culture surveys out there? There are. We really didn't come to an agreement on one, but I think in the future, we're going to continue to look at that. We'll continue to look at Five Essentials and making it as meaningful tool for all of us as possible. Five Essentials is designed around this idea of trying to measure effective leaders, collaborative teachers, involve families, supportive environments, and ambitious instruction by actually surveying parents, teachers, and students. This year, there's going to be a pilot of fourth and fifth grade students. Before, it was really just middle schoolers, but we opted to go in on the pilot and have our fourth and fifth graders participate in the survey. And we will share all the results with all of you. It is interesting, and I think it's a complex issue to try to really measure our environment, you know? And we talk a lot about climate and culture, but how do you measure that? And that's a bit of a challenging task, but Five Essentials is one way. And so we will be embarking on the Five Essentials survey here in the very short-term future, and we'll be sharing results when they are made available to all of us. So that is the superintendent's report.
All right. Thanks, Martha. Next item is the consent agenda. At this time, would the board secretary like to read the consent agenda, please?
Michelle, in tonight's consent agenda, we have minutes of previous meetings, including the closed session on October 18th, the regular business meeting on October 18th, the closed session on November 1st, and the special meeting of November 1st. It also includes the personnel report, the payables pre-list of October 31st, the payables pre-list of November 15th, and the resolution for disposal of district property.
Ms. Joel, at this time, does anyone want to remove any item from the consent agenda for further discussion?
Personnel report, please.
Personnel report, okay. Anything else?
Just a quick question, Martha, on the disposal of property. Do we have a relationship with Glenside Middle School, or how did that donation come about? I'm all in favor of it, but just curious.
Are you familiar, April, with why that particular school was chosen?
I believe there's a connection between the science teachers here and the science teachers there.
Okay. Thank you.
There was a need, or they didn't have the materials that we had. They were cleaning out the lab.
I wouldn't...
Still materials that are usable, with all of our new ones, they wanted to make sure they were used.
I'm glad we should.
I'm sure they appreciate it. Stuff that's expensive and I will use every month.
Anything else on the consent agenda, then? If not, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the personnel report?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thanks, Margie. At this point, is there any discussion of the personnel report? If not, is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved.
Second. Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Epstein.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carry.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the Riverside Education Council. Is there any... Are there any comments from Riverside Education Council? If not, then we move on to the board member comments. Does any board member have any comments about any activities that they participated in or events that they saw?
I went to the presentations for Veterans Day at Hauser, the sixth grade and the seventh and eighth grade, and it was fantastic. As always, District 96 always does such a great job with Veterans Day, but specifically the Hauser one was really great. My dad comes every year, and it's a wonderful time.
Let's see. So I was at the performance last night with the Christmas Carol. Definitely a great performance, once again. They managed to pull off an amazing show, and it was a good time it's had by all. Also, Monday was at a basketball game in Villa Park. And one question, or a comment, I guess. I know that we had... The game started late on Monday because I heard the buses were late, and I know we've had some concerns about that. Actually, my daughter was supposed to be here tonight, but I think the basketball game was running late again. I haven't heard the reason, but I am suspicious of that, and I guess that might be an item for future discussion.
Topic for future discussion?
Yes.
So that's on the agenda?
Great.
Anyone else?
Dr. Willam, I were attendees and judges at the Central Science Fair. There as usual, amazing. And thank you to Jennifer Hepker-Royer and Ms. Schreier, who were amazingly organized as usual, and I think we had a record number of students there. Getting so much better at utilizing their procedures and their analysis and really careful work, and I was really proud of them. So neat to talk to them and hear what they're thinking about. So it was really fun.
I agree. That's always a great event. I really enjoyed that. I also attended the Veterans Day celebration for Central. It was also fantastic. They did a really good job, as they always do. And I was at the Hauser play last night as well, and I think they did a fantastic job with the Christmas Carol. And this is several weeks old, but I was at a jazz concert that Mr. Columbo organized for Hauser, SE Gross, and RB a few weeks ago, and that was also a great event. So all kinds of things happened. Very nice.
I should mention there was the choir at RB with all the middle schools with the high school, and that was impressive how they brought everybody together.
Anyone else? If not, then next item is the committee report. So first committee report is finance. Rich?
Just a reminder that the levy is going to come up for board approval at the December 20th meeting. If anybody has any comments or questions leading up to that, I encourage that they get asked.
All right, thanks, Rich. Next is Education Committee. Sherry?
Yeah, we had two presentations from Ms. Brownlow. One was an achievement presentation, very detailed, and she does a great job kind of breaking down all the assessment numbers and also professional development. So those are available if you need to look at them. A lot to digest, but really good conversation and a lot of... We're doing a great job, and of course, places to grow, but she did do a great job.
Okay. Sherry? And then we have the Policy Committee. Dan, any work on that?
Right. And I think further in the agenda, we have three policies that we'll be discussing or re-discussing tonight. We mentioned them the last time around. First two have changes concerning GPS devices. That's the Children with Disabilities policy and the Student Behavior policy. And then third is the Community Use Policy, which, again, we discussed those at the last meeting. See them a little further in the agenda.
Thanks, Dan. Next, we come to Old Business. The first item in Old Business is the Belite Park Roof. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the Memorandum of Understanding for the Belite Park Roof Project with DLA Architects as presented?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion about this Memorandum of Understanding? We had asked for it to be revised last time. I don't know, Martha, maybe you'd like to maybe summarize the changes for the public...
Sure. I mean, it's...
Yeah, we had two presentations from Ms. Brownlow. One was an achievement presentation, a very detailed, and she does a great job, kind of breaking down all the assessment numbers and also professional development. So, those are available if you need to look at them. A lot to digest, but really good conversation and a lot of, we're doing a great job, and of course, places to grow, but she did do a great job.
Okay. Sherry? And then, we have the policy committee. Dan, any work on that?
Right, and I think further in the agenda, we have three policies that we'll be discussing or re-discussing tonight. We mentioned them the last time around. First two have changes concerning GPS devices. That's the children with disabilities policy and the student behavior policy. And then, third is the community use policy, which, again, we discussed those at the last meeting. See them a little further in the agenda.
Thanks, Dan. Next, we come to old business. The first item in old business is the Belite Park roof. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the memorandum of understanding for the Belite Park roof project with DLA Architects as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about this memorandum of understanding? We had asked for it to be revised last time. I don't know, Martha, maybe you'd like to maybe summarize the changes for the public?
Sure. I mean, essentially, this takes on a different structure of payment and moves us to a time and materials basis with a not-to-exceed limit of $58,000 for basic services. And this came from some original discussion around a percentage fee on the project, and I know the board spoke, I thought, really insightfully and in a way that was really helpful for then our architect to go back and hear from all of you through, by way of the recording, to really get a sense of kind of opinions and impressions and ideas. And so, I think this is a culmination of that, really an understanding of, you know, wanting to create an agreement that obviously everyone is good about.
Any questions or comments about that?
I just have a question. What is considered, what sort of falls under basic services?
Rob, do you want to touch on that?
I mean, is that just?
Basic services under the architects' fees.
Well, they'll design the roof, the new roof, and how it's taken off, and they will help with the, they'll come out and review the work and make sure that everything's followed. They'll go to code building, code meetings with the village and things like that.
Yeah, I guess my question was, I guess maybe more should have been asked, maybe what's not included in basic services?
Anything that's not considered, anything extraordinary.
So, I think basic services references a specific term defined in the AIA agreement. Then, so, I mean, I'm sure he doesn't have that at his fingertips, but it, yeah.
And it would be in our board book also, because that was a formal agreement that we approved last year. We could look specifically at the month, and you could go back and read that portion, too.
Yeah, if we ask them to do something different besides the roof replacement, if we added some, something else to it, some changes to scope or something like that, so...
The scope of services are further up in the MOU is actually pretty broad. It defines it in five different categories there.
Any other questions on this agreement?
I'm satisfied with the new structure of it. I think Martha and Rob, you guys did a good job on it.
I agree. I think it's much cleaner and more transparent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Margie, please call the roll. There's no further discussion? Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Barsadi?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Marhold?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. We next move on to the 2017, 2018 district goals. I know there was a question about these goals, so before reading the motion, I just wanted to ask if anyone had any further questions or any...
I, first of all, apologize. I meant to have this on my list at the last meeting to mention, so I emailed Martha that same night. It's item number four on the district goals. I would like to see this deferred or removed until we've had a formal presentation on it, because it wasn't in last year's scope or the other one specifically mentioned, and I think we'd need to hear some details about it before we make it an actionable goal. Standards-based grading can mean a lot of things, and I just have a lot of questions, and I think it'd be nice if we heard something about it before we make it a goal. I guess I'm asking for it to be taken off until we hear about it.
Martha, could you summarize briefly what it is, what it's about, and if there's going to be any, would there be any issue in taking it off and deferring this for a future discussion when we get a board presentation?
Sure. So, the goal reads, "Develop a stakeholder group to begin examination of a successful transition to a standards-aligned reporting system." So, that's kind of a longer way of saying that the way the Common Core alignment process has been, which has really kind of been a multi-year process, is that there's, I shouldn't say culmination, because I don't know that it's ever really over, but one of the goals is that our report card would better reflect the Common Core state standards. So, the communication with parents, the report card is really essentially a tool of communicating with parents how children are doing, specific to the standards, or specific to what they're learning. And also, it's becoming more and more a unique way to communicate directly with children, too. So, you know, Sherry and I have talked a little, Jeff and I have talked a little, that, you know, I apologize if it wasn't clear that this was kind of meant to be kind of part of the Common Core alignment process. This is something that our teachers are eager to see move forward. Really, the goal is written very intentionally to sort of develop that stakeholder group, really starting with a group of teachers, to begin examination. So, beginning, this is potentially also kind of a multi-year process. Absolutely would bring any kind of sample report card draft of the process and then and product to the board for more discussion. And again, you know, again, because this has been kind of an evolution through a couple of years of adopting curriculum materials, working with committees, this is kind of something teachers are saying, but our report card isn't a good match. So, we could certainly probably be having some of those conversations along the way, potentially even reinserting it mid-year, you know, bringing you more information. So, I certainly want the board to be completely comfortable with this as a set of district goals. As you recall, there was kind of a two-way development of, you know, the administration proposed some goals, and the board had a chance in the summer in retreat to talk about the goals. I know we talked about a lot of things when we did that, because within each of these goal areas, I think there's a lot of, a lot that goes underneath and a lot that sort of supports the foundation for that. So, you know, again, that's why I can, I don't, Meryl, if you wanted to share a few more comments about that?
I do have one comment briefly. It doesn't just say it's a beginning examination, it says for a successful transition to. And I guess my question is, we haven't ever talked about it, and that kind of defines it as this is what's going to happen. And I appreciate the administrators having goals, but I would really like to see the community and the board engage first before we do something we have no idea what it is.
Yeah, I think I want to speak to the semantics a little bit, because I think that's where there's some question. So, because, exactly, so that's where I want to make some clarifications. The term standards-based grading is also a term out there that automatically, for some people, implies a product and a certain kind of product and how we report progress. So, there are some districts who have moved to what are full standards-based report cards, which can mean a lot of things in different districts. In some districts, it's meant complete removal of letter grades, which I think a fear that could raise some concerns or fears, because it's not something that's been talked about. So, when we're talking about this, we're talking about right now, taking the first steps in looking at our current report card to say, where do we feel? And I know a lot of the teachers feel like it doesn't reflect necessarily great communication around what they're teaching with respect to the current standards, so they'd like to look at the indicators on there and make better sense of what they're communicating to parents, so that's better understood, what the students are expected to learn. So, that's a piece of it. The whole outcome in terms of a product would be part of the process. So, you start with the staff and sort of best practices around grading, which is different than standards-based grading. It's more, what are you putting into the grade to communicate to parents? And things like extra credit, homework get discussed, effort, all of those things with staff members. And then, you fold in parents or stakeholders into the process to be a part of the development of the tool. So, it's a multi-step process, and we just want to actually start with the teacher side to examine, what are the indicators on our report card now? Where do we think we could better reflect what the kids are learning in terms of how we communicate that back to families? And then, the idea would be from there to create a broader committee with parent representation, as we've done with everything, to say, okay, how do we now create a tool that will best represent that for students, parents, and families? And there's no predetermined notion of what that tool would look like. Some districts have left just all letter grades there and decided to keep very broad indicators. Some districts have created a hybrid of letter grades and indicators that represent the standards. Some districts have gone full standards and no letter grades, and it's varied, really, based on the needs of the district and the communities you serve. But the conversation really generated from, we've aligned all this curriculum, we've aligned all of our expectations for students, we're pretty clear now on what those outcomes are, and teachers have a desire to have the report card reflect those things in a more meaningful way for parents and students. I think they feel like you really have not just the 30,000-foot view, but the 300,000-foot view of what's happening in the classrooms based on the current indicators that are there. So, in a nutshell, that's, that was sort of the intent, and maybe there's a lot of...
My problem in general is that last year, we had a presentation on NGSS.
Right.
Last year, we had a presentation on the ELA. We had a presentation on Math in Focus. We've heard nothing. I really don't, I don't feel like, we may want this, we may not want it. I feel like it's kind of a rash decision to engage in it.
The reality of it is that you're going to examine, does the M then present as...
Well, I think the question is, do we want to do that? We've never really talked about it.
I'm in support of the school, personally. From what you've said, I'm not an educator, so I don't have that background, but from what you've said, it sounds like this is what, you know, the way we're going. And I'll be honest, in elementary school, looking at the report cards, it didn't really mean anything to what they were actually doing. So, for a communication tool, to know that my students are learning what they're supposed to be learning, I'm all for that. I don't think the tool we have currently is very good, so...
I think it depends on a lot of things. I think it depends on what school you go to, and I have really heard nothing about what grade levels, what schools, and I think, for me, it's a board process issue. We should hear about things before they get inserted into the goal list. I'm not comfortable with this at this point.
So, what are, what would you want to hear, though? Because what I'm...
Well, instead of a two-minute explanation, I'd like the same kind of presentation that we have for everything else, so that we have a chance to digest and to get a feel for what...
I do feel like I've heard you guys talking about this a lot over the last few years, not in a presentation, I agree. So, it didn't come as any shock to me, or...
I don't think I... I think the public should be able to hear it, too. It should just be what we hear. At the end of this year, there's no intended product, just to be clear. This year, it would be...
And that's what I read it as.
This year, the goal would be... Well, it says a success, a successful transition to that.
So, if we change the wording...
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think it's a wording.
Like you said, it's semantics. If we change the wording, can we...
Would be any harm in taking this item off for now, having a presentation within the next month or two, kind of explaining what it's all about? And I'm also quite vague about it. I mean, I'm not, I'm agnostic whether it's good or bad. You know what it is, really. I mean...
Well, in the end, it could mean nothing. It could mean no changes, depending, right?
I just think district goals should be decided upon based on a process, and we never really went through that, and that's what I think...
In that context, if we took it off now, vote on everything else, and then have a presentation in the next month or two, if that's possible, and then we vote on that, vote on that based on the presentation. Is that...
So, just to be clear about a presentation, you just want to know, like, a timeline and process, steps in terms of what we would be looking at? It's one sentence, and we have heard nothing about what you mean or what grade levels, what content areas. It could mean a lot of different things. Yeah, it's an examination of our current report card, basically. Right, kind of educating the community and us, and I feel like we missed that process. Okay. We...
Can we see what everybody else feels?
I support that position as well. I mean, I do feel like we talked in detail about everything else on this, and I'm not saying that I'm against it. I think, you know, Jeff's position, I sort of support that, that, I don't know if I'm for or against it. I do want to hear a little bit more about it. I don't want to create a situation where you have to spend a lot of time doing a presentation on it, but if you fed us more information, you know, I think I could get to the point where I...
Yeah, and I'm not sure how you feel about it either. I just feel it's very vague. And I was going to say, to be clear, there's not a for or against at this point, because there's no product proposal on the table. The presentation would be about the process, I think, about looking at the report card and determining where we see gaps in the match between the indicator language. That's like the first step in what we're teaching and learning. And then, the next step in that process would be to say, here are the things we identified where we could do a better job, and that's where we would bring the stakeholders back in to have that further conversation. So, we could align that. I just wish this would have been in last year's goals as well, which the others were. We didn't really follow that process. No, I have the copy of last year's goals, and I just got there. Yeah, partly because we've achieved sort of some of the alignment pieces, and this was... Right, and I just wish we had some more transparency about what you're thinking in the process, because, and I'm on education committee, and I, it was kind of... Yeah, I'm happy to put a presentation together, but I can honestly tell you that there's not going to be a recommended outcome on the presentation, because the outcome would be come from the process. I suggest to be written differently than a successful transition to the system, which is very important.
Do you guys have any, screen inspector?
I'm hearing, the semantics need to change, to reflect what we want to do this year. That's what I'm hearing.
I sort of, I see where Linda's coming from, and that's where I'm at. I don't look at this as an end product, I look at this as, we're starting a process, and we're going to work towards an end product. I'm fine with it as it is. I mean, I'd be more concerned if we were saying, okay, we're going to have an end product at the end, and this is how we're going to do it. The way I'm reading this and the way I'm interpreting is that we're going to start the process, examine it, and then I'm thinking that once we come up with some solutions, then the presentation might be more relevant.
Presentations would come along the way, not just at the end point. It would be steps in the process, but then we'd present it back along the way, because it's not a three-month process. I'm open to either...
Joel or Dan, do you have any thoughts on this?
I would say I'm agnostic on this as well. I wouldn't mind hearing more about it. I guess I'm a little curious about who the stakeholders would be as a part of this group. But again, I definitely hear you that it's, you know, we're starting, the start of the process, just a little more elaboration or maybe changes some of the wording might, you know, the combination of both might go one way.
And to clarify stakeholders, usually we ask for a board rep and then parent stakeholders, whoever the audience is for that. I guess I could certainly bring more clarity to it.
I almost, I think that if we change the language to something like, "Develop a stakeholder group to examine a standards-based or standards-aligned reporting system," that would that be okay?
Yeah, I mean, for me, it was just, I have no idea what you mean and where it came from, and I get a little bit about where it can have Common Core standards, but, you know, it can mean a lot of different things, a lot of different people. I think it's the semantics of that term, because... Well, and then, if they're in the first place without a discussion last year, I think it was a mistake. I think we should have discussed it last spring, so I would have liked to hear about it more.
So, I'll use an example. So, we have some teachers that are interested in attending a conference about grading practices. So, grading practices, the focus on grading practices, have really changed under Common Core alignment with this idea of you want students to really own their learning, we want it to really be about the standards. And I know with this question, one of the questions, should teachers even go to a conference about grading? I need to tell you my recommendations, I think they should, because I think we want to begin to develop how we're thinking about our practices. So, if it's a slower rollout, or if it comes off for a year, or like you said, if it comes off for even a couple of months and we do a presentation, it comes back on, but there's a, part of, I think, the intention around that begin examination was really intended to be very much that, let's get started now, talking about this, thinking about this, moving forward with the process, and absolutely with the intention being to inform the board along the way. So, there was no intention to sort of not be transparent or to keep this off of our kind of important to-do list. But I think it's important, you know, here it is, it's November, so I really very much want us to agree on our district goals. I want them to obviously be the goals of the Board of Education, that you all feel comfortable, you know, backing and supporting. If this particular one represents something more problematic, is it a wording change or is it a removal, or is it a temporary removal? I guess that's what, you know, we need board clarification.
And can we explore, I guess my question is, because teachers do want to make sure that they're being fair and equitable. Is it okay for us to do... I don't think that would affect any need for education at all. I think that's something you bring to a presentation, to say, here's what we learned, but we have nothing to go on. Okay, I just want to make sure the professionals are all good. And I can't vote on nothing. Like, I need to have some information, so...
I sort of, sort of think the board is sort of split, about half and half on this one. I do want, I think it'd be good if we were unanimous in the vote on the major goals, so what I would suggest is we at least take off this item, have a vote on everything else, would suggest is we at least take off this item, have a vote on everything else, and then we can either have a vote on this thing in particular, or we could defer it for a month or two.
Do we vote on it as it's written, or will it come back to-
Just take it off for now and go down the other one. Should we just do that?
Yeah, I'd be happy to see a rewrite.
Yeah, I know. That's what I think we can probably-
All right, so is there a motion to approve the 2017, 2018 goals as presented with the exception of item number four in the curriculum and instruction?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Varsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. So at this point, then, what do we, what are we thinking? Should we vote on this other item, in which case we might not have a unanimous vote, or do you want to defer it until we have a presentation? I mean, I understand your point, Merrill, about this not being the end product. No, but at the same time, it does sound like there are some things that districts are doing along the lines of the common core. It's not like it's complete, you know, unknown. There are some things. So we can at least hear what other-
I could put together, like I did in the past, a timeline, sort of a projected timeline for reviewing, and what kind of the steps would be in the process, and what the kinds of things we would review, and then at what point. Right, right. Because the staff might- Yeah, the staff might, you know, kind of reflect on what they're doing and decide in these particular areas. They don't want to change anything, but in these particular areas, they do. So-
I'd like to hear about content areas, like math and English, you're going to have very different outcomes. And junior high, with a transition to high school, might have a very different outcome.
Yeah, so the intent is to have staff from every grade level and every area represent-
Are you expecting all that information in the first presentation?
No, I'm saying, I'm just making sure we're- It's not kind of rewrite, so that it's not so defined.
Yeah, so that it's less ambiguous.
I would like to hear a little bit about what they need.
I'll put together what the intent is of staff.
I also feel like we can have a goal and still hear about it, too. Like, I guess I'm, I feel like it's more of a semantics issue at the moment, so I'm a little bit confused why we would defer like-
Well, I'm curious why is the goal we've never talked about before? That's why I'm curious. I think for me, that's the most important issue, is the board and the community should kind of have first chance to look at it before it becomes something that's actually-
Yeah, in most places, I guess it emerged just because it's a natural part of the alignment processes. Once you realign to standards, you check yourself on how you're reporting on that progress.
Yes, but there are a lot of different ways to go about that.
So maybe the best thing is, as you say, give us a little bit of a background, not just about the process, but, you know, what are the districts are doing? What are other templates? Like, you know, what is-
Well, I'm not, you know, Dr. Miller, I'm going to step back a bit, because I don't think I'm ready to say this is where we're going.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, you could say, such-and-such has done this, and such-and-such has done that.
But I think that's the whole point of the stakeholder group, is to do that work.
Okay, so you're saying it hasn't been done already?
So I'm feeling like the presentation that we're going to get is going to be very similar to what you have here with a timeline. So for me, I feel like the part of creating a group is, or a stakeholder group is to create the data to present to us.
There's-
I've agreed to create this group. I feel like we're voting on this kind of last minute. It should go with the process.
I feel like at this point, there's no harm in waiting a couple of weeks or two-
Right, we can do committee of the whole.
To give you a chance to provide some context around it and bring it up again.
Yeah, and I think as far as like a product sample, and the reason I'm hesitating on that is I don't want anyone to think whatever sample I would pull would be the one that we determine is right for District 96. And sometimes when you put a sample out there, people make assumptions that that's what you want to end up with. And the samples can range dramatically.
But you can say-
Well, we were looking at specific models at that point. We had read the research already. So right now, we're just in the research phase. I mean, at some point, we would put templates out there, but we're not on the front end, and I haven't even pulled the staff yet to say, this is potentially something that it would end up looking like, right? So we're in the very beginning stages of just pulling a group together to begin getting the information and the training to think about how we're reporting progress. I mean, this was simply really just starting with a group of staff to say, what are our grading practices? What is on the report card? Does it reflect what we're teaching?
So it's also we have a plan maybe where maybe we'll-
So I'll go ahead and put something together, and I can talk more when we meet about the education committee agenda. We can talk more about what would be appropriate to put in there or not in there to represent the work we're going to try to do.
I just have a request as a board member, like if it's going to become something that we want to be a district goal, I think we need to have a really-
Yeah, and I think-
Something we want-
But these have been on the goals since-
This particular item has not been on the goals. It's worked there last year, and it's-
No, I mean, it was on the goals that we presented.
Yes, and I wrote Martha that night. I had it ready to speak, but I apologize. I have it on the panel.
Yeah, and it's, this is not a-
And I think it goes back to the issue that I think we sort of saw aligned, like even the broad goal, this strategic plan of alignment to the common core, this is a piece of alignment work. But I hear that a lot of people, like this feels like a report card, this feels like something separate and distinct. And so we certainly want to honor that question, that concern, and so I think-
Absolutely.
And there's no harm in waiting a few weeks or something.
Exactly, exactly. And I don't think, you know, I think, again, this is the one-year goal, this, what the language, the way it's written now represents really a multi-year sort of endeavor. So I think it can be restated as a one-year goal with some context around it, and that's fine. And we have committee of the whole coming, so we can flush that out at that time.
Thanks, Merrill. Any other comments about that? Then if not, we move on to item number three in old business, which is policy 620, education of children with disabilities. At this point, is there a motion to approve policy 620, education of children with disabilities as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? We did talk about this in the last committee of the whole meeting. Is there any further discussion? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Varsadi?
Aye.
Mr. Regan?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is number four, policy 7190, student behavior. At this point, is there a motion for the board to approve policy 7190, student behavior as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion about this policy? We also talked about this in the last committee of the whole meeting. Any further discussion? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Actually, item prohibited in prohibited school conduct, number 19, it's on page three of seven. Notes, making an explicit threat on an internet website. Can we just include social media in that so that we can just be all encompassing and not have debates over-
Social media?
Yeah.
Could be just through electronic means, right?
Yes.
So you're proposing we change the wording on that side? Is that what you're thinking?
Because you're concerned that that may be too narrow for future applications, right?
I am, because debating if something's internet or not versus social media versus anything on your phone.
Through electronic means.
Any communications, really.
Seems reasonable to me, I mean, any-
That's sort of one thing I noticed with this policy. It does seem a little dated. In like in section five, it's talking about using, possessing an electronic paging device. The only place I'd use it now are hospitals. I've also noticed in number six, which I don't know if this is an oversight, but it's saying using or possessing a laser pointer under staff members' direct supervision in the context of instruction. So it sounds like the teacher says, you can use a pointer for instruction, but we're going to prohibit it. It just seems like we shouldn't, we should just say either allow it or not allow it.
Is this one of the press?
This is press policy. This was actually adopted, I'm seeing, it's May 2016, and the revisions were recommended because of the recording device. So it wasn't kind of a full and exhaustive revision.
It does seem like there are some items here that maybe we should tighten up a little bit. Is that-
Yeah, I mean, that's the way I'm looking at it, because, I mean, I know we discussed this, but I'm giving it like a little bit more thought, and I'm just sort of looking at, we're allowing like phones, and we prohibit phones, but then we allow them in lunchrooms. It just seems like we should, I think there should be like a, either a complete ban or we should allow them.
Right.
It just, I think it's just a little-
So maybe, would it make sense then for people who have suggestions to send those to Dan and to Martha? Have them, you know, take a shot at modifying the, modifying the policy accordingly, and then we can talk about it next time. Is that, is it reasonable?
Back to committee.
Back to committee.
Sorry, Dan. Policy maybe up.
I mean, I share Dan's comment. I share Dan's thoughts that there's places where it gets really specific, which I'm not sure the need of that. I think we should be very broad-based in, we're looking at behavior.
Right.
Individual devices don't-
Right.
Don't have a lot of bearing on if it's bad behavior or not.
Right.
I think that before we make too many changes to this, we want to make sure that it's passed through a lawyer, because I mean, a lot of these words are used because they're, you know, legal. Like internet website might actually encompass social media. We don't, we might not actually have to make the change because it already illegally, you know, I don't know. I would have no idea. It's certainly worth-
I think we pass it back to press, because this is a press policy. So press looks at specific legislation, has legal counsel, review. That's a service that we essentially pay for, so that they give us policies that for the most part feel acceptable and are acceptable to all of us. And so then again, there was this minor revision around this recording device that was recommended to us by our attorney. But I think with these other kind of proposed revisions, Dan, you and I can talk, and then I think we would circulate it back to press and then bring it back to the board for consideration.
Am I good with that? Okay. All right, so we will defer this policy until further review. Next item is the, is non-action item, is the 2017 tax levy. I don't know if Mr. Holmes has any further comments about the tax levy?
There aren't any changes from the last time we met at the Cal meeting on November 1st. However, I just wanted to just kind of remind the school board of the assumptions that were used. The 15% increase in the EAV, a $1.5 million new property, so 1.5 million in new property, which would be a 3% increase in the proposed 2017 levy over the 2016 extension. In other words, that's 3% increase in the 2017 increase, 2017 increase over the 2016 tax bills. So I just thought I just, but anything, nothing has changed. I talked to Fran, and she has no further updates from when we last spoke.
I have a question for you, Rob. Has she quantified that 1.5 million in new property for you, or is she just giving that to you as an estimate?
She gave me what she, she laid it out, the actual properties that she was looking at, yes.
Okay.
Any further questions for Mr. Holmes? Thanks, guys. Thanks, Mr. Holmes.
Thanks.
Next item is new business. We have, the first item on new business is the strategic plan update meeting. When we did the strategic plan, we agreed to sort of meet annually to review the progress toward that, and we had our first update last January. And Martha, I don't know if you had any thoughts about the structure of that last year or-
So what I shared with you is the feedback, the survey feedback. You had seen this before, but I brought back the survey feedback from the January 2017 meeting, and I think some of you were there before becoming new board members. So really, I think it's a structure of providing both sort of opportunity to engage with the community, connect with the community around our progress toward our goals. It's sort of an accountability, as well as, I think, accountability, transparency, good public relations. I think some of you had different thoughts participating in it last year. So really, just wanted to take a few minutes to have a discussion with all of you. Is this something we want to do? Are there recommendations for any change in format? Bob Adonia is the consultant facilitator that we had worked with with our strategic plan. I know he has an interest in coming back. I think he has investment in kind of the structure and the ongoing continuity of our plan. So that would be really my recommendation, is that we bring Bob back. We do something similar. We had reached out to strategic plan team members, the original team members, but also to other interested community members. I think that would be nice, too, to just continue to kind of expand the group of people that might be interested in coming. I think by kind of a January, February timeline, there may be also more information to be shared around facilities. So I think there's a kind of a unique and particular opportunity around facilities, which we know is a key topic in the strategic plan. So just wanted to bring it forward at this point, because really, our next step would be then to have, you know, Margie reach out to all of you and get a date on the calendar.
I'm all for having it again. I think some, I would change the format slightly in that, in the groups. I think people want to hear from the district officials. I know last time it was like, let's talk, and then a community member was reporting out. I don't, I don't necessarily feel like that. I think people wanted a little more information from a person.
Maybe when they report, like-
Yeah, you know, we were sitting in groups, and then the report out. We sat there, and I'm just speaking from my group experience. I was the one reporting out, and I wasn't prepared to report out.
Well, we had the same thing. We didn't know that we had to do-
Yeah, so it felt a little bit like, maybe it wasn't as beneficial as it could have been, because I don't think I'm, you know, the best one to be talking about everything that's been happening in the school, you know.
Right, I agree with that. I also, I totally agree with you. We had the same issue in the finance group. The person who did it did a very good job, but it was like the last minute, they suddenly said, oh, you got to summarize everything we talked about the last hour, which is kind of unfair.
Right.
The other thing, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to change this, but I don't, I'm not thrilled by the structure in terms of the focus groups. Like, that was necessary for, you know, coming up with a plan, but now you come back, you're in the same focus group. It's like, you talk about the same, it's like, I don't know, it's like, there's a lot of interesting conversations going on, and you're kind of confined to the one of them.
Precisely, yes. It'd be good to switch it up, to hear about it before the one topic again and again.
Yeah.
Yeah, or do more instead of the focus group, so do more of like a town hall type thing, where there's a presentation, and then there's Q and A. I think-
Like a presentation of each goal area for everybody that comes.
Done by, done by a district administrator.
I think you feel a little pigeonholed in your group. I think I agree with that. You feel like you're, and then you didn't really get to hear as much about the other things.
Right.
It's a two-second summary. I think Bob would be open to changing that. And I think consistency with Mr. Adonia, though, is important to have the same person there.
Yeah, I agree.
I think it's really important to continue. We obviously, we can evolve the process a little bit, but it's, I think it's a fantastic reach out to the community, giving the community opportunity to get involved.
I agree.
Yeah, I completely agree. I just think if we switch the format up a little bit, it might be a little more informative.
I agree.
Because then we had some new people who came in, who weren't a part of the process, and they were kind of like, what do you mean, we're doing this in a focus? Like, I don't think they, I think we're more removed from that focus group, that activity, that I think we just need to like have a conversation.
Especially now that we have so many actionable things happening that are much different than when we started. So I think everybody, at least that was there before, should know what's happening.
That's good feedback. I appreciate that, yeah. And so we'll reach out about dates. One idea is maybe using the February 7th committee of the whole, but I know we have a lot on our agenda, too, but that's just, we'll look at everybody's availability, and I know-
And what kind of time does Mr. Adonia expect for that process?
I think we did like 90 minutes, and I bet it would be that again.
Second item is the- Yeah. Policy 820, community use of school facilities. I know that Martha and Dan have made some edits to this policy, so I don't know if Dan or Martha, you'd like to summarize what you've changed, and then we can discuss that.
Sure. So I know there was a recommendation from the board to sort of continue to try to tighten up the language. I've read this through now many times. I think, I think the policy really does intend to say, school facilities during school hours are for educational use, use of the school district for our students and our staff. And then beyond that, when we look at non-school hours, making sure that even during non-school hours, it doesn't interfere with school function, student safety, property liability. But I did add some extra wording there, kind of starting with school facilities are for the primary use of education in District 96 students during all school hours. Just like making that hopefully as explicitly clear as we can. And then again, this whole idea that anything that would happen in the schools, and there are very few occasions where somebody's asking to use the school facilities during the school day. We know that the facilities, we want to sort of encourage use through, you know, parks and recreation and other organizations and groups that have, I think of Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, you know, I'm trying to think of other, we were kind of hard pressed to think of what are the times where somebody might want to use the school facility during the school day. And then we came up with voting, a voting site. But I think that any other kind of training, which was really the question that had come up that sort of triggered the review of this policy, would be, no, not during the school day. So I, again, take a look at this. That was really the intention, is to get even clearer and tighter about that being the goal.
My only comment about this before we move off is that 48 hours doesn't sound like a lot of notice to me. You know, and maybe you guys don't get a lot of requests, but, you know, I'm just thinking of, you know, if it's in a policy and it says 48 hours and somebody gives you a request, and the time is clear, and they meet all the other criteria, you know, does that sort of force your hand, or, you know, you know what I mean? It's just, it doesn't give you a lot of time to give, you know, a request enough consideration.
Is that from the boilerplate?
No, these edits are really our own. Yeah, so we could, I think that's really our prerogative to, if we want to say a week, if we want, you know, 10 days.
But it says they have to receive your approval, and so you can disapprove it. There's nothing that says approval is guaranteed. And so that's, we have wiggle room. I mean, we aren't obligated unless there's something in these legal references that says we have to say, yeah, you can be in this classroom.
Yeah, I'm okay with 48 hours. I think it's a little short, but I mean, I'm okay with that. I guess the only thing I would say is, 40 hours should be 48 hours as in school days. So if it's over-
Not a Friday night to a-
Or you could say like two business days.
But does that even give you enough time to get a certificate of insurance from an organization that's written out the right way to protect the school? It doesn't.
But that, they don't have approval unless you have a certificate of insurance. I mean, that's, you can say that. It says that here, must provide certificate of insurance.
I think the idea behind the policy is to protect the school, right, to protect the property. So I don't think it's asking much.
So you think just want to make it a little bit longer, basically, the timeframe?
I think that's just the safety. And then you can even put it there based on the discretion of the superintendent.
I mean, I'm fine with pushing it out even further. I mean, 40 hours, I'm okay with, but if we want to push it out further, I'm-
So we phrase it in terms of business days, as you suggested, and then a certain number of business days.
Four hours. I mean, I have no, I'm okay with 48 hours, but I'm also okay if we feel like it should be more than 48 hours.
But I do think it needs to be business, like school business days, so. But I do think there needs to be business, like, school business days, so.
And we could say something, I mean, I think we could extend it to a week, I mean, I'm trying to think, like, 48 hours, if you're going to go, you know, 72 or something, I would almost go by business days, or say, a week. And then we could add the part about the discretion of the superintendent. So let's say somebody asks, and it's actually something we really want to have happen in the schools, you know, that we see as really favorable, something good for our students, then I would want to be able to say yes on a quicker timeline. I can't think of an example, but you know.
We can mention like a lecture, someone's supposed to lecture the library, and let's say it's being sponsored by the Ohlsted Society or something like that, and they say, oh, you know what, this would be interesting for the fifth graders to hear about, you know, trees or whatever. And they didn't plan it out, you know, and you might want, you might say, yeah, that sounds good, you know.
You're in town.
So you want to have some flexibility in that kind of thing.
Yeah, the discretion, then, I think is easy.
But that's not using the facilities, that's actually doing a presentation.
Doing a lecture, yes, right.
That's education.
That's true, that's true.
So I do think, like, the, yeah, it's hard to think of an example, but I think what we're trying to protect ourselves from is that a last-minute request.
And was there a follow-up?
PTO groups, I think, use these facilities, use some of the facilities, I mean, they have emergency meetings or something to discuss.
I think they work with the school principals to figure all that out.
So yeah, PTA's, PTOs are really a function of us, you know, I mean, we would say, we want, you know, we've worked this out, so assemblies, I think of that as an educational experience, that's something, they're not really an outside group asking to use our facility, they really become part of our educational programming that we want.
This is for like, the theater groups, the outside theater groups, the.
Outside theater groups saying, could we use your auditorium for the week? Not a play for our students to go into. And again, I think these are, I'm trying to really imagine some of these, perhaps not necessarily easy to imagine, but we would say, no, you can't use our auditorium when a school's in session, because we, we need it.
We use it.
Yeah, we use it. Again, I think it's, it's pretty rare to get asked to use a school when school's in session. The policy really starts with that, but we know there's been at least one occasion, so.
Aside from the 48 hours, are there any other things on here that people would like see changed or modified in any way?
No.
I want to add the discretion on the superintendent, if that helps.
And I like the addition of the must not cause distractions from the student's educational experience. I think that's an important addition.
That's really good.
So it sounds like we basically would maybe, would ask for maybe a few more very minor changes, and then revisit, and just clean it away, and then.
The other, the other thing that's in here, the very last line talks about, a fee schedule and other terms of use shall be prepared by the superintendent and be subject to annual approval by the board. This is an older policy, but I did attach our fee schedule, and again, this is a new business, so this is not an action item, but something to take a look at, and when we bring the policy back, perhaps we could take a look at that fee schedule, because it is something the board should really approve, and it, you'll see the actual copy that you have here is a little dated. I think it's dated like 1980-something.
82.